Good afternoon, everyone, and happy spring and fertile equinox, first day of spring. I call this special zoning and meeting of the Burnley County Board of Commission together to order, and we'll have a silent invocation, and I would ask that we keep in mind the passing of our state police officer and our deputies who did appear to have apprehended the suspect on that very sad occasion, so moment of silence, please. Please stand for the pledge. Let me see, are there any additions or changes to the agenda, Mr. Hamm?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, no, there are not. We are ready to proceed as scheduled.
Okay, I would just like to make an opening statement that this is a very, very important day for us here in Burnley County and the region. The comprehensive plan is an extremely important document, it's an extremely important process we've been through, so today is a public hearing of that comprehensive plan. We will not be taking a vote today as a commission, but it is, the purpose is to hear the presentation, to hear public input, and to have discussion, and then we will go from there. So I just wanted to make that clear, and we do have quite a few folks signed up. We'll have a two-minute period for each person to speak, but so we're going to try and keep the presentation to a little less than an hour, and then the public engagement for the hour, but we have a 5:00 meeting, so I'm going to, I'm going to ask it maybe end at 3:45. Director Hamm?
Madam Chair, commissioners, thank you for those opening remarks. We will absolutely be able to abide by the schedule as you've laid out. I think we'll be able to even do a little faster than that, but if you don't mind, I'll start when pleases the commission.
Please.
Okay, very good. Well, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Nicholas Hamm, I'm the Director of Planning and Development Services for Burnley County. Very excited to stand before you today to present the proposed comprehensive plan for Burnley County. This project is two years in the making, and I have some notes today, I don't usually do that, but there's a lot to cover, and I don't want to forget things, so. And it was a, it's a grassroots effort, really meant to capture the community's voice and to bring representation to the needs of the county resident that we serve. I'm going to take a moment just to introduce the team that worked on this. First and foremost, Avira Lopez, she's the county's planning manager, she was the project manager for this. You know, she did a lot of the heavy lifting here, but it was a team effort in earnest. So also today, Mino Savoka, senior planner with the county, Aaron Hill, he's our intern, but he punches like a graduate student, Carrie Barker, she recently joined our team, but she's also provided meaningful input in the time that she's been with us. Let's see, Maggie Gould in the back, she's the county zoning administrator, she's been meaningfully involved in this, and also Carl Redman, another one of our planners. All these folks that I've just introduced, save for Aaron, they all have master's degrees in the field, they all have decades or years of experience, they're all very committed to the work of making the county a better place to live and work, and you'll see that in the work product that they put forth for you today. Okay, outside of the planning department, I want to acknowledge county staff and departments, the city of Albuquerque, outside agencies of all levels, from local, state, to federal, the land grants, the tribal communities, the neighborhood association leaders, the business community, and the public generally. This is, this, this document would not be the jewel that it has become without their involvement, and it really is, is thank you to the public for being involved. I'd also be remiss if I didn't thank the county's planning commission. Very fortunate, you all have appointed very capable and effective individuals to that body, and they undertook a very thoughtful and thorough public hearing process to consider this, so I want to thank them for their work. Also, just to make note that they gave us a unanimous recommendation of approval for you all to consider today, and we are appreciative of that. Today, we're going to walk you through the project, the process, and the work that went into this, so I'm going to give introductory remarks, and then I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Lopez, and then to give time to county departments to talk about their contributions to this as well. I do feel, you know, in reading public comment and leading up to this, I read everything that comes our way, I read the Albuquerque Journal when it's relevant to my work, so you know, I do want to take a moment just to sort of manage expectations a little bit and talk about potential limitations of what this can and can't do. It's, we cannot, in this document, unilaterally reinvent state and regional water planning, though what we can do in this document is we can move that conversation forward in a very meaningful way. We worked with our technical professionals in the county, with the water authority, with other agencies that have involvement in that, and you know, I, the voices that come from the community that really are concerned about the water situation in our region and our state, I agree with them. They, that is a very important thing that we need to be very mindful of. Water is precious, water is life, as some people might say. That, that is not lost on us as we bring forth this document, it's just we can't upend that in this document, there are limitations of what it can do, but I do believe that it pulls the direction that those folks want to go. With regard to the Santalina development, I know that there are opponents to that, and I'm, you know, we're likely to hear from the day, and I respect their involvement and their voice, but as planners that work for the county, we have an obligation to just acknowledge master plans that were approved by the Board of County Commissioners. This one in particular was upheld by the courts, there are development agreements in place, so I just want to make it clear that this doesn't give Santalina anything more than what they have, it doesn't take anything away from them, it's just an acknowledgement of the fact that it does exist. What it can do in that arena is that it can better inform the decision-makers to be able to address future applications from the Santalina developers for the future Santalina that we haven't even thought about yet, and in that vein, it, it better prepares us to address these, these developments that would occur on the fringe of our communities. You know, it, it allows us to better hold those folks to be accountable to the obligations that they agreed to in approval of that document. This document, you know, with regard to the dialogue around Bieber, we have been paid very close attention to that. Madam Chair, I want to thank you for facilitating a conversation with those folks, it's very helpful and informative, and in this document, it, we incorporate and adopt potentially the most recently available and reliable demographic information that we could find. We worked directly with the Mid-Region Council of Governments, with UNM's Geospatial and Population Sciences Group, and, and I would say that those are sort of the preeminent groups that deal with demographics in the region, and really the experts in that field, and what is available is incorporated in this document, and it helps you all, as decision-makers, better evaluate land use matters as you navigate our processes. Another thing I want to talk about is the collaboration with the city. So in this process, we've heard from voices within the city of Albuquerque, and we listened carefully, and what we've done is to lean into this collaborative idea of partnership. You know, we understand that regional planning does not happen in a vacuum, and a lot of our systems that we address in this document, they don't happen with regard to a political boundary. The public just wants these things to function and to function well, and we recognize that. And so, the other part of what we're going to present to you today than the comprehensive plan is this idea of a collaborative vision document, where we can formalize that partnership to strengthen the bonds between the city and the county, and to really set out implementation strategies and metrics by which we can measure ourselves to make sure that we're, we are doing the things that we need to, to work together. I've been comparing our bond as sort of a marriage between the city and the county, you know, I, I see a strong marriage as one between two co-equal partners that are strong in their own right, and in that, allowing the county to have a document in the same way that the city has a document, we can pull together, and we, we can be stronger together and, and really influence development in the region in a positive way. And so this is not us running away from the city, it's, it's us embracing our professional acumen, the sophistication of this organization that I've worked for for a long time, and to really work together better, and we're confident that, you know, provided that the board grants us approval of that concept, that we could bring you something within six months to be able to consider and approve, and in our conversations with city staff, you know, we believe that that can be true of the city council as well. Okay, so let's talk, like, the benefits of this. This creates a very stable environment for county residents and economic development initiatives that come our way. It makes communities that have been overlooked for too long visible and present in the process. It, it's about representation of the community voice, of all shapes, sizes, colors, flavors, you know, however you want to characterize that. It's, it is a broad, it's a big tent, and we went out to small groups, neighborhood associations, all the way up to, you know, big, huge developers in the business community. I mean, we, we listened to everyone, and we tried to represent all of their needs in this document. It furthers the county's mission to serve the needs of our citizens through provision of infrastructure, public safety facilities, it addresses housing needs, behavioral health, sustainability, clean air, and protection of our precious water resources. It allows us to tackle the challenges facing us and to take advantage of the opportunities that might come our way. And as I close this, I just, I don't think I could express just quite how proud I am of this document and the work that's gone into this by the county staff, particularly the planning department, but other agencies and departments as well. You know, this, this is not only a beautiful document, but it is professional, it's thorough, it's comprehensive, you know, not to overuse that term, but it, it accomplishes the goals that are required of us statutorily to have a comprehensive plan so that we can implement good zoning and have a quality document to inform land use decisions as we move forward. I'm just really excited to be here today to hopefully get this over the finish line. You know, that's going to allow us to start another planning initiative that will spring forth from this document, and I really look forward to telling you all about it today and to answering all of your questions. With that, Madam Chair, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions, Nick? Director Hamm? I did just want to ask one clarification, so you're saying upon approval of the Burnley County Comp Plan, you're saying six months later, they're, you're shooting to accomplish this approval of a, or bring forward this collaborative vision, and so I'm sure we'll hear more about what that means.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the commission, that's, that is our, indeed our intention, so that document is, is hopefully going to serve as an appendix to both of our plans that sort of bridges them together, you know, so while we have, the reality is we have different land use jurisdictions, and as a consequence, and different land, planning frameworks, as a consequence, we might need different comprehensive plans, but we are very cognizant of the fact that we are in a region, and the city is an important partner in that region, and, and we, we want to strengthen that partnership and lean into the process of being able to work together with them. And so six months is the, that's the hedged timeline, but we, we would be happy to bring something forth even sooner than that, if we're able.
And just one last comment on that, you know, this is the first time that Burnley County has called our Comp Plan, a Burnley County Comp Plan, not an Albuquerque-Burnley County Comprehensive Plan. Very important to me to understand why in this deliberation, so.
Sure, and for my, I can explain just a little bit about that. For a long time, Burnley County didn't even have a planning department, I mean, it, just as recently as the mid-'90s, you know, that would, we, we relied on the city for land use matters, and as a consequence of that, the city staff, I think rightly so, prioritized the needs of the city resident. You know, they worked for the city, the folks that elected the leaders of that lived in the city, and, and I don't think this was deliberate or intentional, but for a long time, the county resident was just sort of overlooked or took a backseat to city priorities, and as this organization has become more capable, you know, as you see in the folks that worked on this document, we've, and, and with the adoption or the enabling of the home rule from the electorate, we've now come to a point where we can take ownership of the lands that we have sole authority over. The folks that live in unincorporated county, they can't vote for the mayor, and they can't vote for city council, and they rely on us to represent their needs and to speak for them. And so this concept of, you know, we're separating, I don't know if I fully agree with that because this is, this is just an acknowledgement of the fact that we, we're just two separate municipalities with separate jurisdictions, but there is this concept, I think, that we can really lean into about collaboration.
And I'll just close, because I know you need to get to the presentation, but to me, it's not about the government or a planning department in one or the other of the government. To me, the comprehensive plan has always been a regional plan about regional issues, about geographic, about environmental, as we're developing as a, as a small community. I know the original one was done in the mid-'70s, I started in the city in the mid-'80s, and we always talked about the comprehensive nature of this when we talked about protecting our open space, and that is why we have a successful open space program, because it was planning, it's not jurisdictional governance. So I'll, I'll stop there, and Commissioner Levas had a question.
It's not a question, it's just a comment. I, I think I'm a little bit concerned about the, the idea of an appendices or appendix in each plan that points out the sameness. I think the sameness needs to be, I don't want to use, sameness is not the right word, similarities, the areas of overlap, the areas of, of key collaboration should be at the top, because this is the comprehensive plan. I mean, it's, it's comprehensive in the name, and it's really critical that we focus on those areas where we are collaborating, where we should collaborate, and where there is that nexus of, of ideas and policy, and there's a lot of that, I think, that the majority of this document is, is really reflective of, of areas where we ally, where we're, we're very much the same. Yes, we have different planning frameworks in the sense of, you know, kind of our zoning code and our, you know, the IDO, the differences there, but I really think those are minimal in the sense of what they're compared to, those things that, that we share common, and so I think it's really important maybe to, to think about that and the optics of that, what that says about the comprehensive plan if we're putting those comprehensive areas in the back, those are, those are the, the things that, that we're kind of, so I think that's important, and I think it's really important that there is strong agreement at the staff level and the political level between the two entities on, on how we proceed forward. I know we're kind of at the finish line first, and our, our great planning staff has, has brought us there, I know the city's doing an update, but I just really want to emphasize that I, I really hope we can come to sort of a political and staff-level agreement on how we merge into that, you know, regional comprehensive plan, while pointing out those key differences that, that make us unique and make the city unique.
Just very briefly, Madam Chair, Commissioner Levas, understood, and if, if it were to, you know, appendix was how we were thinking, but if it become a preamble as opposed to that, I mean, I think we're very receptive of that, and building consensus, you know, that's what planners do, and, and we, we will lean into that objective and continue to work towards that goal.
Commissioner?
Sorry, just quickly, because I, and I, hopefully, you're going to present to us something, this isn't...
So Ms. Lopez is going to get into the meat and potatoes of this, I'm, I'm, I'm setting the stage, if you will.
Thank you, and just to the comment, I think, in line with my colleagues here, that right when I hear like, it's not, I agree that this should not be a politically driven process, but more that, like, the biggest example for me is like bikes, right? Like, if, if we're going to make bike lanes, shouldn't they just, and the city's going to make bike lanes, shouldn't they just also maybe connect, because then it'll mean that the county unincorporated area doesn't just get to the place where the city isn't able to keep using it, or vice versa, right? That's the way I think about, and I don't want it to be political at all either.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Boa, you are exactly right, and that's exactly how this document functions, and that's how the integration between the way that the city and the county function, I mean, there are technical staff here that can speak specifically to, like, you know, if you want to talk about the transportation network or the open space network, as I've been mentioned, we're prepared to detail how those work together.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That's all from me, I'm going to turn over Ms. Lopez at this point, but thank you, commissioners.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, commissioners. Thank you, Director Hamm, for setting the stage. What I'm going to present about is I have an outline, if I may share my screen. I'll be presenting about the project and its scope and purpose, and I'll be giving a brief overview of the county's planning framework, the process that we followed in updating the Burnley County Comprehensive Plan, what were the summary of updates, because now that, having been through the process, we can step back and report to you, what were the most significant changes that were made? And in addition to also restate the corresponding project, SPR 2023-0003, because there are two projects before you. Number three has to do with affirming the importance of collaboration and having a common vision for the region with the city of Albuquerque, because we also have been very mindful of what this document means for our relationship, our history of planning with the city of Albuquerque, and the importance of regionalism. And so we have put forward a project number three to articulate how important our collaboration with the city is, as well as opportunities to continue finding how to strengthen those relationships as well. And then I'll be providing some concluding comments. And so before you, if you are able to see on your screens is the outline, so to the left is our presentation with the technical aspects of the process, and then I'll be handing it over to our department directors and, and staff that were very closely involved with all stages of the process, and I'll be describing how they were involved in order to report to you the quality of this document. And so this is the Burnley County Comprehensive Plan, what we're calling the Blue Sky Edition. As we have progressed with incorporating folks, the input provided by people, the people who've participated, and the agencies and technical staff, we have changed the cover so that folks can follow along with the process. And so I'll begin with talking about the project's scope and its purpose. Currently, Burnley County follows the 2013 Albuquerque-Burnley County Comprehensive Plan, and it was last updated in 2013. This plan is over 10 years old now, when we started, it was just under 10 years, but we have undergone an, an about two-year process working on this in, in earnest. The, the idea was not to overhaul the zoning as what the city had done in 2017 and '18 when they updated their comprehensive plan to address their needs. That process was really setting up for an overhaul of their zoning code to address urban needs. In our case, we were not hearing that, and we deal with land use cases on a day-to-day basis. Our framework has worked for folks where there's priorities to protect and, and maintain rural character, and also have areas where development is encouraged in our centers and corridors. We have not been hearing from the ground up that we needed to change the zoning code. In fact, when we did start reaching out to the community, they were nervous that we were going to adopt the IDO or that we were going to overhaul zoning. So I just want to say that this particular project was not to overhaul or change zoning, to add or remove zoning. However, we have had ongoing land use cases, I mean, we didn't stop planning in the, in the last two years, and that, those cases have been evaluated against this 2013 plan. So we're in need of an updated plan that reflects current conditions. And as, as some of the data that, once we, we started opening up the plan, we learned that some of the data, even though this 2013 plan was amended in that year, much of that data really is outdated, dated back to the '80s. The other opportunity that we saw with this scope and limiting it so that it would, you know, to be able to talk about what its purpose was, to also clarify what the planning framework was for Burnley County, particularly now that the city has adopted an IDO and has a different approach to some of the development framework, when you, when you compare to the framework that we still have and, and are continuing to propose here. And the other part was to identify the unincorporated communities that are in need of planning in the, in the unincorporated communities, so being able to talk about them very clearly in a comprehensive plan, we saw as an opportunity to make visible the communities that historically, for the different dynamics, and, and it's not for deliberate reasons, but based on the history of planning, the unincorporated areas have not been very visible in, in our comprehensive plans, and so this became an opportunity to really highlight who the peoples were, their communities, their histories, their identities, and information about them as, as it relates to planning. And so what is this Burnley County framework? The framework is characterized first by the open space network. All development does happen in relation to the natural features in, in our environment and in the region, that is the, the beginning, and we do have these development areas that also help to define the region. So I'm going to list them, and then I have some maps, and I can talk a little bit more. I think the visuals help for those that are following virtually as well. So we have open space network, we have development areas, we have the centers and corridors framework, community areas, and we also have a plan ranking system where this comprehensive plan is the rank-one plan, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. And as Director, as Director Hamm stated, we do need a comprehensive plan in order to implement the regulatory aspect, the zoning code. So in order to be able to have those tools to manage development, we need a comprehensive plan. And so speaking of the open space network, this map shows the open space network in the region, and just to say that when we did engage with the city and other regional collaborators, the National Park Service, for example, we did update based on the information and collaboration with these entities. So I know there's concern for collaboration or that, that topic or that content would be in an appendix, that's not the case. In fact, we have integrated the concept of collaboration and regionalism within this comprehensive plan, and I know I'm going to toggle between these two projects. The idea of having a document that articulates the importance of collaboration, whether it's as a preamble or as a, a last chapter, I think we wanted to propose that in recognition of how important our collaboration with the city is, but at the same time, how important with this Burnley County Comprehensive Plan and an opportunity to really emphasize the, the needs of the county, the priorities of the county, and its uniqueness and its planning framework. But going back to this open space network, this shows the open space lands in, in the county as well as the city, and those that are planned, and it is very important that we collaborate, because we're, it's going to take all of our entities, ourselves and the city, and any, any other entities that are applicable, to preserve these open spaces. The development areas is an important framework in our comprehensive plan historically in the last decades, and what this is, is basically identifying the different development areas based on the desired character, intensity of development, and the lowest intense areas are the rural and reserve areas, the rural areas, as you could see on this map, are shown by the green, and they move on up to the more intense development areas, with the highest being established urban areas, and those tend to be closer to the core of the region, closer to the city of Albuquerque where there's infrastructure. And there is a correlation between these development areas and the available infrastructure to serve them. So these are the kinds of things that are dealt with in this development areas framework. It is a concept that we continue to follow, and it is an area where the city has diverged with a different approach, focusing on areas of consistency, areas of change. We don't have those definitions in our comprehensive plan as the city diverged in order to meet urbanization needs and fill needs. And so this development areas framework is very important to us. It is the beginning of land use entitlements. We use these development areas on, in day-to-day application of request. of land use entitlements. We use these development areas in day-to-day application of request. When you have an individual who would like to develop their property at a certain density, the first place we look at is the comprehensive plan, because in the different development areas, it is where you begin to identify those desired densities. For example, in the rural area, in the comprehensive plan, it is articulated that development in the rural areas is at a minimum one acre for each lot, and you can have one house per acre. That's a very low density. And then in contrast, just to talk about the most more intense areas in accordance with this Development Areas Framework, we have the established urban areas. In this comprehensive plan, we can have up to five dwellings per acre. So now you're talking about five times the density. And we have other mechanisms to allow for even more intensity in the appropriate locations. But just to let you know and share that these development areas are very important. It is the beginning of entitlements in Burnaleo County. The other important framework is the Centers and Corridors Framework. This concept has been developed in the last several decades, beginning with planning leaders like Paul Lusk and others that came after and before him. This is a very important concept that really focuses how land should be developed in the region in correlation and coordination with transportation networks. It recognizes that transportation and land use go hand-in-hand, and in fact, we know that on a very basic level. We never allow land to subdivide or develop if it does not have the appropriate access. And this is at a regional scale. We can look at the different levels in the transportation network. We have premium transit, we have major transit, and all the way down to commuter. So we have different designations for the transportation networks that are defined and related to how much capacity they have, what function do they serve in the region. We also have land use designations in this concept called Centers. So we want to focus the more intense development in Centers, and that's a general statement. We also have different typologies for these Centers. Some of these Centers are focused on employment, others are focused on services, entertainment, and jobs. So we have the different varieties, and I just want to point out to you, if you're looking at the map here, these red little blotches are called Village Centers. And what you'll see in this regional network is that the county has the Village Centers, which have a unique character and different needs. Some of them don't have the infrastructure that you would find, for example, in the city and closer to the established urban areas of the region. And so this is an important framework for us as we're evaluating projects. Where do we want to focus our more intense housing? Where do we want to focus jobs? And when we do that, we are able to leverage efficiencies in addition to when we're asking for, for example, capital improvements and that sort of thing. So it's a very important framework to help us in our day-to-day and also long-range planning. The other framework that we have in the comprehensive plan is the Community Areas. The Community Areas is a concept that has also existed since the early 80s, and it accounts for all areas in the county, and it identifies the different communities, such as the East Mountains Community, the Southwest Area Community, we have the Northwest Area, the North Valley, and the North Albuquerque Acres. We also have the most, I guess the newest would be the Santalina Community, because we do have an adopted plan. And so as I said in the scope, the purpose of this project was to articulate, clarify, and show all of the planning that we have in Burnaleo County. It is not an opportunity to remove entitlements or to add entitlements, but we have asked projects to go through rigorous improvement, excuse me, application and entitlement process. And so we are reflecting all of the approved planning in these community areas. And it is a tool that allows us to also move into smaller area plans, which is what I'm going to share here as the last element of our framework, key element, and that has to do with the ranking system. As I said, this Burnaleo County Comprehensive Plan is the Rank One Plan. As a ranking system, it is the first, and it is at the top. All lower ranking plans, meaning Rank Two and Rank Three plans, are designed to be consistent. They need to be consistent with the Rank One Plan. And so as you move through the ranking system, the geographies become more focused and smaller, so the mid-level would be the Rank Two, and those are what we consider the area plans. And just to say that when we identified these community areas in the comprehensive plan, we really tried to recognize previous planning efforts. And so if you look at the North Valley Community Area, it really coincides with the North Valley Area Plan. If you look at the East Mountains Community Area, it coincides with the East Mountains Area Plan. It's an approved planning document as shown in these little images. In Rank Two, we have the East Mountains Area Plan, we have the North Valley Area Plan, and going back in the Southwest Community Area, we also have an approved Southwest Area Plan. And you could say Santalina is a Rank Two Approved Planned Communities Plan. And so we really did try to work with previous planning efforts in updating this comprehensive plan, taking advantage of this great opportunity to really focus on the county and make it clear, how does planning happen in the unincorporated areas of the county? And so we have these ranked plans, and Rank Three plans are the smallest geographies, such as the Isleta Sector Development Plan. These plans are unique in that they are focused more on a more focused neighborhood or community area like Isleta, like the North Albuquerque Acres, West Central, Bridge Boulevard, and we can focus and actually build in regulatory language into these plans. And just to say, since I'm toggling between the two projects in terms of this project to recognize the city's efforts and why we're doing this, because I think it is fundamental, we did begin with that question. Do we want to do this? Do we want to adopt the city's plan, or do we want, is this an opportunity? Eventually, we got to the question of the opportunity to really focus and clarify on Burnaleo County. When the city adopted their 17 plan, and we participated in that process, just to say, we didn't know what the end result was going to be. And I don't know that the city knew what the end result was going to be at the beginning, as probably we learned in our own process here. What the city did in 2017, along with adoption of their IDO in 2018, is they did rescind their Rank Three plans. So over 50 plans were rescinded, and they did also have regulatory language in their plans, but for them, it was becoming unmanageable. It was becoming an impediment to their development process. For us, we're not dealing with those issues. We're at different stages of development, and we have also different priorities. And I say that delicately, because some communities want to remain rural. Their aspiration isn't to become an urbanized area. Okay? So these plans allow folks to identify their vision for their neighborhoods, and then have corresponding policies and regulations to maintain the character, you know, to articulate the history, the identity, and also create unique places within the region. And that's how these Sector Development Plans and Rank Three work. And we're still following those. We are not rescinding those. And in fact, when we started reaching out to the community, often that was a question. Not only are you adopting the IDO, we would of course say, no, that's not part of the scope, are you rescinding our Area Two and Area Three plans? And many of these leaders have participated in their creation of these plans that have been around for decades. And of course, we are hearing also in those processes, the need for additional smaller area planning, such as Mountain View, North Valley Area Plan. We've heard requests to update those plans, and the need for additional planning along corridors, that we're seeing changes, and we're seeing opportunities for investment like Course Boulevard Corridor Plan, our requests for more planning in the future. And then now taking us back to the process. We did begin in earnest. I say in earnest because what to do about the Burnaleo County Comprehensive Plan has been on our minds since we participated in the city's process to update their plan back in 17. We did not adopt that plan, and the main reason being that we saw the end result, we saw the priorities, we saw how the county was represented in that plan. It was not clear, the communities were not strongly represented, the priorities changed, the framework changed, and so we put a halt on that. And so we were left with our 13 plan for the last five years, and we had been pondering what to do. We did extensive evaluations, we looked at the issue from different angles, and internally, what we, our professional opinion was, let's move forward and see what a Burnaleo County Comprehensive Plan process would be like. And we started that in earnest in 2022, October 2022. And we began with meeting with our departments and working our way out, and I have some graphics to show you that. But this is a timeline just to show, we began our department and agency work in October through May, early summer and the spring. We moved into a public process in June. We began open house meetings in June of 2023. We were ready to submit a draft in September 25, 2023, to the County Planning Commission, which led into the first hearing at CPC on November 1. We did end up having two meetings at the CPC, a second one on January 1, 2024, and that has led us here, March 19, 2024, our first time meeting with the Board of County Commissioners. And so I think we've talked about the framework. In terms of the update, this graphic shows the important components that have gone into the plan additions. I've said, we've started meeting with our Burnaleo County Departments, the commenting agencies, and then we went through a very rigorous public input. And it wasn't linear. As we continued to incorporate the comments, we heard from some of the agencies multiple times, you know, as we were incorporating, and did we get it right? And, you know, perhaps they didn't see something, and they provided new comments. So the comments from the agencies were ongoing through this process. And this is a list that I've used as I've been presenting about our process. We've had, at this point, and I stopped listing these on September, we've had more. At that point, there were over 300 points of communication and contact. This is just with departments, technical staff, and agencies. And if you really start looking closely, these are all public documents that I've posted on our project website. You can see the transition from working with Burnaleo County staff to talk to them about what can we update, how would this serve the county, what are the standards and policies and procedures that we have an opportunity to clarify for the county. And so we began with our county departments, and then began working our way outward, reaching out to agencies, and in some cases, from the very beginning, reached out to the agencies or entities such as the City of Albuquerque. They were one of the first staff that we met with to let them know, because we recognize the importance and our planning histories, and how delicate this was of a topic as well. We have always had that in mind from the very beginning. But meeting with entities like the Water Authority, MRGCD, AMAFCA, and working our way through to other federal and state and local entities, we met with all of the tribes, we've met with federal, the Forest Service, the National Park Service. We've also met with our land grants, with our SECA associations. And this is a comprehensive list of all of those entities, Burnaleo County Departments, City of Albuquerque, we've met with staff from the mayor's office, city council staff, planning staff, air quality program, Open Space, GIS, their mapping. In fact, we built a lot of our maps in coordination with the city's data, and we intend to continue doing that with future plan updates. We met with the base, Vaidoro National Wildlife Service, the National Park Service, Bureau of Land Management, US Forest Service, regional entities, as I already stated, Mid-Region Council of Governments, APS, PNM, the utilities, Kirtland Community Sustainability Committee, all of the tribes, the land grants, the business community, neighborhood associations, and incorporated communities, all within Burnaleo County. And I will say, this has been a great opportunity. One of the maps and the corresponding text in the comprehensive plan now clearly articulates all of the entities within Burnaleo County, and we've had great opportunities to also update, for example, lands that the tribes, particularly Sandia Pueblo, has been acquiring. So this has been a great opportunity to build relationships, and again, we plan to continue doing that, and systems to have very current information. And the reason this matters is because when we need to have correct maps, we need to have correct information about the jurisdictions, because they have sovereignty over their lands. And so that informs how we will continue to do outreach with those neighbors and entities that need to be informed and involved in land development. In terms of our June meetings, we had meetings in every section of the unincorporated county throughout the month of June, in the East Mountains, Southwest, South Valley, North Valley, Albuquerque, North Albuquerque Acres. And then we also had hybrid meetings here at headquarters to make sure that there was access for all who were interested. These are the different versions of the comprehensive plan, starting, and just to say that the comprehensive plan is based off of the 2013 Albuquerque-Burnaleo Comprehensive Plan, and that's important for a lot of reasons. One is because we're maintaining the framework that has been developed over decades. We're not changing the framework, but also that many of the policies from this plan are shared by both the city and the county, and that's true now. So with the concerns about having common vision, common goals, these two, our plan has common goals with the city's 17 plan, however, focused on the county and using the same framework that we've developed over the last decades. The first version that we developed was in June 7, and that is the plan that we took out to the community in June. This version incorporated a lot of the updates from our departments and our collaborating agencies like the Water Authority, AMAFCA, MRGCD, et cetera, the technical folks who are involved with land development. And we made sure to include that, because we wanted to have something of substance to share with the community and helping them to see the purpose and where we were going with this update. The next draft was Marigold Edition, because we did receive input from those June meetings and communication in between, because not everybody could attend those meetings, but we did continue to put the word out in different ways, personal phone calls to all the leaders, posting projects on the website, email blasts. And so we did get additional input, and keep in mind, this is all before we actually entered formal process. So we developed the Marigold Edition before we entered formal process at the County Planning Commission. By the time we entered formal process, we had a very solid document to present to the County Planning Commission, and that was presented on September 25. That's the prickly pear that you're seeing here, the fourth one, second to last. And we did receive comments leading up to that from the public. So keep in mind, through all of this, we're receiving comments, and we of course have to have a deadline in order to produce and publish, but we keep all of that comment and bring it into the next one. That's how we've dealt with this. And these comments, as I said, have not only just been from residents or the business community, they have also been from the agencies that have been participating throughout, like APS and the COG, for example, Stand Out. And then lastly, we have the Blue Sky Edition. What is before you is the second version of that. We kept it blue. So we presented to the CPC the November 27, Blue Sky Edition, and what you're receiving now are the comments that were received prior to that 27th, November 27 deadline. And so they do incorporate the direction from the County Planning Commission to incorporate changes and corrections. And this edition, for example, now shows this area in the Far North Valley, and we worked with the neighborhoods, we heard them, we worked with the Sandia Tribe to incorporate the Edith Enclave, this little area that had ambiguity about its status in the region. It had been represented historically as being in Sandia Pueblo. The community understood that. They asked us to clarify that with the Pueblos. We worked with Sandia Pueblo, and they agreed. That area is now shown in the county, and our maps show that in your version of the Blue Sky published on March 8. That's an example of the kinds of changes that we did from CPC to now.
Ms. Lopez, I want to just interject here, and on the time.
Yes.
So it is 5 till 4. I think we do need, we have almost 30 people that want to sign up. I'm sorry, that have signed up that want to speak. So that'll take us for another hour. Since we have already made the decision that this is going to be, you know, continued to another meeting, what would be a good, I mean, this is very good to hear your process, but we haven't heard the, the meet. And I know you want to hear, hear from the directors. But at four, I think what I'd like to do is go to the public, then those comments will be able to, I mean, there'll be probably a lot of questions because we really haven't been able to dive in to the meat of it. And I, I think that it's very fortuitous that we did it this way so that we can come back again and maybe respond to some of that public comment. But is there any other important message that you want us to get or important points that you know perhaps the community is, is going to be asking about?
Madam Chair. Thank you very much for the time check, and I will wrap it up. I do have a slide that summarizes the changes. I think that's important. And I think I've started to integrate them. So I'm just going, I'm not going to read all of them. That just shows that the comments were reduced, and that's this slide. And I've already mentioned many of these elements that have been updated. Where we were able to articulate the vision for growth and development. We, we extracted it from all the planning documents that we do have in the county. So we have a vision for growth for Burnaleo County. We are affirming the framework that I've already presented here. We updated the background chapters with participation from our, our departments and commenting agencies that work with development. We've updated maps and texts to showcase our framework. We are also identifying new and emerging land use and transportation planning issues and trends related to the environment, climate change, housing, behavioral health, economic development, and capital infrastructure. We have current population information based on the 2020 census. I mentioned the Edith Enclave. We collaborated with entities in the region. We identified areas that are undergoing change, so we're setting up for future planning. And we also have identified, articulated a way to monitor and evaluate this plan. And that's in the implementation chapter. We've updated that. And that would be every five years. And really, that does get me to the, the end. I think we've talked about the associated project number three, which is to recognize a city's plan and, and a, a commitment to develop a document that states and articulates how we will currently, how we currently collaborate and how we'll continue to do that. And that's really the purpose of project number three. And with that, I am closing. And Stanford questions, but I also am aware that we have other folks signed up to speak.
Fellow commissioners, I would like to move to public comment. And since people are here, we want to hear from you, and then we'll go from there, depending on timing. So that's what, yes.
Have anything at the beginning? Madam Chair, I just want to say, this report is amazing. Your staff has done excellent work in working with the city and trying to highlight everything in, in 45 minutes or 50 minutes is a difficult task, but it's overwhelming, the effort that went into this. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. Thank you, Ms. Lopez. And so without Julianne, we have, let me read this important statement. We'll now move on to public comment. And each person has two minutes, and you will be alerted about your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium so that we can include everyone. And before your statements, please state your name for the record. And to maintain order and decorum, and in the spirit of professionalism and respect for everyone present, speakers must adhere to the two-minute timeline. So when you hear that bell, please, thank you, go back to your seat, and then we'll let you, the next person go. So go ahead, Julianne, and read the names.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 29 speakers this evening, starting off with in-person speakers. Ms. Ward, followed by Bruce Stidworthy, followed by Elaine Hebard.
Does this one work? This one's already.
Oh, are you trying to show something?
No, my comments are written on this.
Okay.
It does work. But if you put your laptop on the podium, you can use the podium.
There's a computer already here.
That's fine. You can just set it on top or close it.
My name is M. Ward. I live in District One. And I do have another question because there were two resolutions. I had two sets of comments, one for each resolution. So if I, so like, which do you want first?
I would, I would say use your two minutes, Ms. Ward.
Right.
And you'll have another opportunity, as, as we've said.
Okay, so I'll just, the comments I'm about to give pertain particularly to the resolution for recognition. Madam Chair, Resolution SPR 2023003 proposes recognition of the Comprehensive Plan unilaterally adopted by the City of Albuquerque in 2017. That document is titled Albuquerque and Burnaleo County Comprehensive Plan. Documents from city officials or staff in support of the resolution repeatedly named Burnaleo County in the title of the document. Yet the resolution before you refers to a document titled City of Albuquerque 2017 Comprehensive Plan. This document does not exist. It is unclear to me exactly what recognition means. A Cambridge definition of the word is agreement that something is true or legal, and I have a problem with that. The comp plan currently used by the City of Albuquerque eliminated community-based sector development plans. What would the county's position be if a proposed development in the city negatively affected abutting adjacent or nearby properties outside the city but inside the county and is contrary to the county's stated intent and policy to preserve the rural and agricultural chari, character of the county? What would the county do? Also, just to finish up the last bit, there are, like, I noticed typing grammar spelling errors. And I think some potentially could change the interpretation of the documents. And I really, really, really think those need to be cleaned up and cleared up prior to adoption or consideration of adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward.
Do you think I should just leave?
I'll just leave.
Bruce Stidworthy, Elaine Hebard, Kendra Montanari.
My name is Bruce Stidworthy. I'm the president of Bohannon Houston, and I'm the current chair of the Greater Albuquerque Chamber of Commerce. And today, my comments are on behalf of both of those organizations. Good afternoon, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony regarding the Burnaleo County Comprehensive Plan. We urge your support of the Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan is a rank-one plan, meaning it is the highest-ranking planning document for the unincorporated parts of Burnaleo County. Approval of this companion plan, as it refers to itself, meaning companion to the cities or companion to the 2017, I'll just call it, plan, provides greater clarity to planning and land use decisions for the unincorporated portions of Burnaleo County. There is great potential for economic and fiscal development within Burnaleo County, and that potential is more likely to be realized in positive and constructive ways as a result of having a current, clear, comprehensive plan in place. Our support is also due in part to the fact that this Comprehensive Plan does not change existing lower-ranked planning documents and does not change the existing county zoning code. Similarly, we are supportive of the updates to the Economic Development Chapter to better reflect current economic trends in the county. Thank you, and we urge your support.
Elaine Hebard, followed by Kendra Montanari, followed by Elizabeth Haley.
Can I knock this down? Elaine Hebard, thank you for this opportunity. I am going to address the Water Supply Chapter. And thankfully, this county staff has met with me and made some changes, but I still think there are some other ones that need to be addressed. One, framing the water reality. The ambiguity of water rights has been acknowledged, but planning requires that those, that quagmire of water rights, credits, and permits be considered when policy, within your policies and techniques. Land use planning can help. Consider the impacts of transferring water rights from ag to urban uses. Be on the loss of the green belt, habitat, and air quality enhancement. Methods to reduce the loss of recharge should be included in the techniques. Climate change changes our reality. We're not just going to be impacted by climate change. We are being impacted. There should be a separate section, as noted by your office, of sustainability. The information, adding more depletions, which will happen as we use more water, groundwater, will lead us to further problems with the state and the state of Texas. By including information and emphasizing impacts, policies can be formulated to counter the trends. The techniques could address ways to deal with increased heat as well as less water. And then finally, treat the ABCWA as a separate entity. If we're going, we have these now three plans, actually, the city, the county, and the ABCWA. And that's, you don't have one of those nice working relationship agreements with a water utility. But if you're going to continue to have it as a separate entity, make it so that it's just stating the, what, what the utility is, not exactly what it, all of the issues because it's incomplete. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hebard.
Kendra Montanari, followed by Elizabeth Haley, followed by Renee Horvath.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the County Commission. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Kendra Montanari. I'm the Transportation Planning Manager with the Mid-Region Council of Governments. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to say how much we've appreciated collaborating with the county staff and with the county in general. As our partners who serve on our board as well as on our committees, it's definitely beneficial for us to all be in communication and make sure that regional plans comply with comprehensive plans. So just to speak to a few items, we appreciate the collaboration for sure. We were brought in early and often. Also, we appreciate the integration of our most recent Metropolitan Transportation Plan. They've included our land use and transportation integration components, as well as our version of our key centers, as well as an importance to protect and preserve rural areas. Also wanted to speak to the population figures and say, we did definitely collaborate with the county staff to bring in the most recent demographic projections that underlie our long-range plan, as well as update some of the demographic profiles. And lastly, we appreciate a beautiful transportation section. We worked closely with Richard Meadows and Julie Luna to make sure that safety as a priority was brought forward into this plan, as well as multimodalism, and really appreciate the great job that they did. So thank you for the collaboration.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Haley, followed by Renee Horvath, followed by Lotto Silva, followed by Melian Gormijo.
Good afternoon, commissioners. And Madam Chair, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Elizabeth Haley. I'm the chair of the Paradise Hills Special Zoning Commission, a member of the Paradise Hills Civic Association, and also the president of Wescona, representing 31 neighborhood associations on the west side, most of them within the City of Albuquerque. So I believe that I have an understanding of both things. I also have a master's in architecture and planning and was a federal consultant and to tribal nations for most of my career before retiring. My problem is that there are many fine things about this plan that I think are lovely. Some of the recommendations that came from me, like including information about the volcanic rift valley and the special, the special resources that we have on the west side were included, but my neighborhood and the Paradise Hills Special Zoning District was not. And so there are probably a population of 5,000 that simply aren't mentioned in the plan. We aren't mentioned in really any segment of it, except 10 citations to say that we are in other, so that we are, our data is amalgamated with data from tribal areas and land grants, which is extraordinary considering the amount, the, the number of households and, and, and the long, the long tenure of the Navajo, of the Paradise Hills Special Zoning District. And so we do have our own special ordinance, but an ordinance that by a Supreme Court ruling has to respond back to a, to a comprehensive plan, and we simply aren't, aren't mentioned in the plan other than to say that we aren't mentioned, that we don't have data. The, the Paradise Hills is a, a CDP, a census district, although it doesn't have all of the zoning district in it. But still, if the state can, can include us in the Local Elections Act, if there can be an overlay with MLS, one would assume, and since you and MGIS Department actually designed our maps for us, one would assume there's enough data.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. We'll continue the conversation. Certainly, staff will reach out to you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Renee Horvath. I live on the west side. I live in Taylor Ranch, and I'm with the West Side Coalition. And we deal with a lot of land use issues out there, and we have open space with the river and the petroglyphs. And we spend a lot of time trying to get complementary development around those areas and encourage more buffer protections because these are one of the most unique areas of the city. And like Elizabeth said, we are in a rift that gives us this really unique topography and gives us some of the best views that any city could have. Plus, Albuquerque has a unique cultural history with the petroglyphs and also Old Town and all our older neighborhoods. And I particularly liked the sector plans that we had that were developed in the 80s. They brought us some of the most beautiful development along course. So we did not support the city changing their comp, their, their zoning because it's too intense. And we're dealing with, because of that, they eliminated, they rescinded our sector plans, and now we're dealing with a lot of issues. In fact, someone over here next to me, we're dealing with an uphill issue because she's in the county and there's a lot of density right up behind her that wasn't intended. And as a result, I'm worried about the centers and corridors. That's what the city is. And areas of change, you have to be careful with that because they use those as excuses to not follow the design standards. Like, oh, it's an area of change, so we can change it up and do whatever, ask for variances, give waivers and all this stuff. So that's a concern that we need to be cautious about. I do see a lot of good concepts in this plan and history, but we have to be aware how, when you go to the APC or any of these, that when they ask for things, they use these as excuses to not follow good design standards. So I want to bring that up.
Thank you, Ms. Horvath.
Lotto Silva, followed by Melian Gormijo, followed by Genevieve Chavez Mitchell.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, commissioners, staff, and all the hardworking people that put together this document. It's a big change from the 1970s when the first zoning plan came out. And hopefully, we'll move forward and make Albuquerque and Burnaleo County especially the best county in the state and in the region. And I appreciate the work of the planners. I have given a copy to Ms. Lopez, and I hope it falls into your hands because I have the copy here, but I didn't make enough copy for all of you. Now, this most important comment that I have right now is that in Mountain View, there's an intersection at Rio Bravo and Second Street, 97 acres north of the Water Utility Authority, and it's zoned M2. Now, it's, it's been zoned M2 for a long time. Thank God, there has no been industrial development on there. But now, we'd like to be able to make it multi-use zoning. Because it, it comportes with the Sunport Sector Development Plan, and it has also been endorsed by the Mr. COG, Council of Governments. And we want to make sure that we're able to get some decent housing there that we need in our community, affordable housing, and possibly other commercial needs we have in our community. Our grocery store is one and a half, two miles away from us. We have a whole ton of fast food places over there, but we don't have any grocery store at all in Mountain View anymore, things like that. We need to make it a multipurpose, multi-use zoning area. We need to make it a multipurpose, multi-use zoning area, and it's in my document. We'll make sure it gets into your hands. The second issue, of course, is the need for a health impact assessment methodology to be incorporated into the planning.
Thank you, Ms. Silva.
I think my time is up.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And you've provided written comments, so thank you for that. Ms. Garmijo?
Madam Chair, Board, it's been a while since I've been here, and I just want you to know that Marcos and I did not plan on wearing pink the same day, so it did happen. My name is Melian Garmijo. I am the Executive Director of the Enchantment Land Certified Development Company. We're a 30-year-plus organization that helps small businesses in New Mexico access capital. And a lot of these small businesses are your constituents, constituents that reach out to us, who are looking to expand their businesses in Burnaleo County. And I could give you recent, specific examples, but I won't do that right now. So we, I just, on behalf of the LCDC, we're in support of the comprehensive plan, and we're not really concerned about the optics of the plan. For us, the bottom line is, is that when I bring a small business to come talk to Nick's department, that Nick has the tools to tell that small business what they can do and what they can't do. And we go through this quite often with the city, more so than the county, because they don't have the direction that Nick has right now. And so he needs to continue to have that direction. So I support staff, and I support this comprehensive plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Genevieve Chavez Mitchell, followed by Marsha Fernandez, followed by Barbara Taylor.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Genevieve Chavez Mitchell. I live in Mountain View, and I'm the President of the Mountain View Neighborhood Association. The county has not had an updated plan since 2013. I urge you and ask you to consider this as something that is very much needed. The county has engaged with the neighborhood and asked our opinion about the issues that need to be tended to. A clear plan that would allow the county to implement policies that fit the county and the unincorporated areas. We in the Mountain View neighborhood need county support to address such issues as zoning, housing, public safety, roads, storm drains, road lighting, environmental health, pollution, water quality, parks and recreation, jobs, community health, and open space. This plan allows for that. Additionally, the Mountain View community is highly impacted by industrial pollution, and this plan would allow the county to have a directive to address those issues. Finally, I would just like to say that I think that the planning department did an incredibly good job on this plan, and it addresses issues such as infrastructure, land use, and all the history of the county. And I would urge you to approve this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Marsha Fernandez, followed by Barbara Taylor, followed by Pat Hauser, followed by Alan Marks.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name's Marsha Fernandez, and I've been working with the neighborhoods since before most of these folks were born, at least 35, close to 40 years. And I've been involved in, I couldn't count how many meetings and hearings and how many letters and how much testimony I've given over the years. But you know what? Never have I ever been involved in a process with a county where it didn't feel like I was just clawing my way, you know, through things. If I said something, people responded. Things that I actually said are now being considered in the plan, and that just, that freaks me out in a really good way. These guys rock. Ms. Lopez is amazing. She's been herding cats for a really long time with this process and done such a fabulous job of keeping people focused and moving in the right direction. And I just wanted to say that I'm very thankful for a couple of things. One is that the plan for the unincorporated part of the county really focuses in on us being different than the city, and that's really, really important to those of us who are living in a semi-rural area. Also, there was never any mention of taking away the sector plans, rezoning, like the city did. I sat in on their meetings as well, and that was really disheartening to watch what happened to the neighborhoods. They lost, they were disenfranchised, in my opinion. The people that I work with in the city neighborhood associations feel totally disheartened and disenfranchised. None of that happened in this process. In fact, if anything, we've been given more power. We've been called to meetings repeatedly, and if they didn't hear enough, they contacted us by text and by email and by phone call, and we've had so many contacts with county staff. And I just, I have the greatest respect for these folks. They're amazing. And if they tell you that this is a good plan, you need to believe it, and you need to pass it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Barbara Taylor. I am a former, now happily retired, Director of the City Parks and Recreation Department. I am currently a member of the city's Open Space Advisory Board, but I'm speaking entirely for myself. First, I have to say to you, it is really surprising and dismaying that the county has decided on a go-it-alone strategy. After all, the city is actually 80% of the county, and most recently, it has seemed like the county commission has made it a high priority to reach out for consultation, collaboration, and cooperation with the city. I would wish the city would do the same. Second, I was able earlier today to read the open space and pros, Parks, Recreation, and Open Space sections of the proposed comp plan, and I think the approach and recommendations in these sections make my point about joint planning. Five of the six-sided open space initiatives are currently active initiatives of the city. The policies and recommendations at the end of the pros section are entirely consistent with city planning, though I'm not quite sure why we lost post, parks, open space, and trails. In conclusion, I just want to say that I know the city is also working on an updated comp plan. Seems like it would make more sense to collaborate than to go it alone. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Pat Hauser, followed by Alan Marks, followed by Linda Dietz.
Can we share on here? Guess we have technical difficulties, I don't know if you can see the map or not, so I apologize for that. My name's Pat Hauser. I represent the Maria Dyers Neighborhood Association, and I've also been asked to talk for the North Edith Corridor Association. And I thank you, Madam Chair and other chairpeople. I saw Mr. Benson in a meeting here just a few weeks ago, out talking about how they're going to put more Fourth Street on the diet, and so, you know, I guess things are good for all folks and so on. I'd like to thank the staff for working with us on this, and most importantly, that this is critical to keep the county different than the city. And I've been this close to Mayor Keller when he's told me, I'm not your mayor. And so we got an issue there, is that it seems to be a one-way street for the city and not for the county, where we can talk back and forth. And so this comprehensive plan is very important to all of us, but one of the critical components that I'm here to talk about is the enclave area here. That enclave area on page 45, that it depicts this, is that it shows it as Burnaleo County, but it also shows it as Sandia Pueblo. And so it's very important that we take this component of this out, because that now represents the underserved and underrepresented portions of Burnaleo County, because everybody sees that as part of Pueblo of Sandia. So that is a serious problem, would say that we want to make sure, Mr. Hamm's been working on that, to make sure that that map is corrected, and that the people, there's hundreds of families out there that are considered to be part of, when somebody looks at the map, being part of Pueblo of Sandia, and they're not, we're not. And so that's important. And as been, from the rural part of this county for the majority of my life, I think we need to be recognized by the county, that we have county facilities, we should have city water, or county water and city facility. We don't have that out there. And I think that's wrong, that goes completely unnoticed for hundreds and hundreds of families out there. So I commend the planning staff for doing the things that they've done, but we need to fix this, so that underserved and under-recognized people in north part of the county get the proper representation to get the services that they and we need out there. I stand for questions.
Thank you, sir.
Alan Marks, followed by Linda Dietz, followed by Michaela Rens Whitmore.
Do they see that? Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, my name is Alan Marks. I'm a resident of the South Valley. I'm just here to express my appreciation for county staff and the process that they've employed and the document that they put together, and I want to express my full support of the comprehensive plan that they presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marks.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Linda Dietz, and my address is 7017 Edith Boulevard Northeast. It is north of Osuna, along the historic El Camino Real. The significance of my address is that it is the home of the Barella Bledsoe House. It was built in the 1870s by Juan Esteban de Barella. Because of Mr. Barella's ingenuity and design, it's been around for 150 years. Stop and think, 150 years. Which house built today will last that long? Because of his effort and smarts, the US government has designated it as a structure worthy of legal protection. I mention this only because this two-mile stretch of Edith north of Osuna, there are at least seven other structures, including the Mount Carmel Church, that have the same federal protection. And I mention all of this because of the current Blue Skies Comp Plan, for the very first time, has indicated a specific interest in this area. It has been designated a study area, number three, in the plan. The plan also describes its historic significance at page 376. Again, this is the first time. And so because of this recognition in writing, I'm happy to support this inclusion in the plan and the effort of the staff to listen to what we've submitted. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dietz.
Michaela Rens Whitmore, followed by Yuridia Morales, followed by Norm Gom.
Hello. My name is Michaela Rens Whitmore. I'm a planning manager with the city of Albuquerque. In August of 2023, the mayor sent you a letter asking you to reconsider adopting a separate plan, and instead, adopt a joint plan to continue coordinating regionally, cooperatively, and creatively to identify joint solutions to current and future challenges that affect both jurisdictions. In October, city council adopted a memorial asking the same. I come here today to remind you of these requests and urge you to direct your fabulous county planning staff to work with us to come up with a joint plan that reflects each jurisdiction's people, places, and needs, while committing us to a shared solution to the challenges we face now and in the future. We respect that the county needs a comp plan with a narrative that reflects the voices and desires of county residents, and we understand that the county will continue to implement the comp plan in its own way. We believe that both of these valid needs can be accommodated without sacrificing the commitment to a jointly adopted comp plan that we've had for almost 50 years. The vision that we've shared since 2003 is to manage regional growth by encouraging development in centers and corridors to protect rural areas and open space. We have stayed coordinated over time by implementing that strategy through jointly adopted goals and policies that guide each jurisdiction as we review land use and development proposals. We know that city and county staff do a good job collaborating for efficient delivery of services. We also know that collaboration works best when it's built into institutional systems. Politics and projects can flare up into conflict that significantly impacts the ability to coordinate successfully at any given point in time. Ultimately, that's unavoidable, given different missions, priorities, and governing structures. What can ensure, I need 10 seconds, what can ensure continued relationship and commitment to regional planning and efficient use of taxpayer dollars is a jointly adopted comp plan that lasts beyond election cycles, political relationships, or any single project. I urge you to recommit to a jointly adopted plan to keep us in good relationship across multiple efforts over time. Thank you.
And because we're short on time, please come forward. I do want to direct staff to have a further conversation on those comments, and I'd like to be part of that. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thank you so much for the opportunity. My name is Yuridia Morales, and I'm here representing and speaking on behalf of the Economic Development Department for the state, and absolute support on having, and the importance of having this plan, this comprehensive plan. We work on a daily basis, specifically with Economic Development Department, under the leadership of Marcos Gonzalez and his wonderful team, and not just constantly speaking with companies, big companies, small companies, small businesses, coming to not just, of course, Burnaleo County, but I've heard many times the work collaboration, and this is exactly what we're looking for, and a full support of having this type of document. We have a lot of companies, of course, that are looking into expanding here and within your region, and it will be fantastic to see a document like that, which it will be access and guide, a resource for many developers that they will utilize to see, you know, just the strategies that they can see in a document. So absolute and support of the comprehensive plan. And lastly, Burnaleo County, of course, will be a leader showing to other counties, will be an example, that hopefully the other counties will have the opportunity to look into a guide like this and continue, you know, moving forward our city, our county, and of course, our beautiful state. Thank you.
Go ahead. I don't think that's going to work.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Norm Gom. I live at 44 Canyon Cito Drive, Albuquerque, New Mexico, 87122. I'd like to begin by summarizing a little bit of my background, and I would like to show the overheads that I prepared, because I won't have time, I think, to comment on them individually as I am speaking, if that could be arranged.
We'll try, but I'd like you to continue speaking, and we'll make sure we get those printouts to the staff, but I apologize.
I am a career New Mexico water engineer, and perhaps my biggest qualification for making my remarks to you today are that fact and the fact that I love New Mexico and its people and its rivers and our water. I've spent my career in water, and at 75 years old, I tried to speak for water as what it is. It's the thing that if we are without it, we have nothing else at all, nothing. I started with the City of Albuquerque Water Resources Department in 1978 as a 29-year-old newly-licensed professional engineer, as part of a court-ordered nuisance abatement plan for the city of Albuquerque, that had been found to be maintaining a public nuisance at both of its sewage treatment plants, which were totally failed due to design errors and to lack of maintenance and proper guidance in operation. I completed over 18 years with the city of Albuquerque, the last as Albuquerque Water Resources Manager. I had co-chaired development during that time of the Albuquerque-Burnaleo County Groundwater Protection Policy and Action Plan, which was approved by both governments in 1993 and 1994. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gom. We will have public comment in our next meeting, so you can continue with your.
I do have written comments, if you would like them, but they are really not structured to be formal.
Can you give your written comments to staff? Can you give your written comments to staff?
They're different.
Yes, please. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're going to move to Zoom participants, starting off with Rianan Samuel, followed by Chad Matheson, followed by David Vogel.
Right. Hello, Commissioners. Can you see me? It doesn't seem like I can enable my video for you all.
We can hear you.
Okay.
So please.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Rianan Samuel, and I am the Executive Director of NAOP New Mexico. We commend the collaborative efforts between Burnley County and the community on the proposed comprehensive plan update. This plan reflects the culmination of extensive public input and ensuring that all voices of residents and stakeholders were represented. It addresses specific needs and conditions of unincorporated Burnley County, aiming to enhance the quality of life for all residents. The plan's focus on sustainability, resiliency, health, safety, and welfare underscores its commitment to long-term community well-being. Importantly, this plan maintains existing zoning and land use entitlements, affirming the current framework developed over the past three decades. It clarifies planning in unincorporated areas and communities while also updating goals and policies to reflect current conditions and standards. This comprehensive plan serves as a vital roadmap for responsible growth and development in Burnley County. Its adoption will provide clear direction for future initiatives while preserving the unique character of our communities. We urge your support, recognizing its importance in shaping our county's future in a sustainable and an inclusive manner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Samuel.
Chad Matheson, followed by David Vogel, followed by Amy Craig.
Well, good afternoon. My name is Chad Matheson, Senior Vice President for the Albuquerque Regional Economic Alliance. It's a pleasure to speak to the importance of having a comprehensive plan for the county. As you've heard, this comprehensive plan is a rank-one for Burnley County and will ensure orderly development in the unincorporated areas of the county. As such, the comprehensive plan identifies areas where more intense commercial and housing development activities are allowed to take place through the Centers and Corridors Framework and adopted lower-ranking plans. As you've heard, some of the lower-ranking plans include the Upper Petrogliffe Sector Development Plan, the Sunport Commerce Center Design Overlay, the Sunport Transit Development Plan, and the West Central Sector Development Plan. These lower-ranking plans identify areas for commercial and industrial development and anticipate large parcels for economic development that can be relied upon to facilitate future growth in the region. With that, the comprehensive plan can serve as a guide for prospective developers to understand the development requirements, standards, and expectations in the county. Importantly, as it was said, this project does not add or remove zoning entitlements, but does recognize economic changes in the community and the need for additional planning. Lastly, as a data-driven regional EDO, we are proud to participate and support the county teams and our economic development priorities and are encouraged to see that the Economic Development Chapter have been updated to reflect current economic trends in the county and highlights programs to facilitate economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
David Vogel, followed by Amy Craig, followed by Nicole Freid.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is David Vogel. I am a former planning and management systems consultant. I'm going to recognize and compliment the county staff on the current plan that's under consideration. It's an amazing piece of work that really represents high-quality professional staffing. I want to begin by making the point that good governance does not use bad data. So my comments today are focusing specifically on the Santalina component of the March eighth draft of the comprehensive plan. The recently released report by UNM's Bureau of Business Research confirmed that the projections contained in the various Santalina proposals are based on misleading data. Fortunately, credible data is readily available through a variety of sources, including the Bieber Report. Therefore, the Santalina Development Master Plan and the Burnley County Comprehensive Plan need to be revisited and reconsidered with realistic fiscal, hydrologic, and population data, all of which are key components of good governance. In addition to undertaking the ten-year review for validity that is of Santalina that is included in the planned community criteria and confirming that Santalina meets the county's no-net expense criteria, I'm appealing to you to revisit and reconsider the Santalina Development Master Plan and those parts of the comprehensive plan that are impacted by Santalina because of the faulty data upon which it was based. I'd also appeal to you to engage Bieber to complete components of the study as recommended and retain Bieber as a data repository and developer of the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Vogel.
Thank you for your consideration.
Amy Craig, followed by Nicole Freid, followed by Tim McKeachan.
Ms. Craig? Shall we move on?
Moving on to Nicole Freid.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I am Nicole Freed with the AMAFCA. I'll give you the brief version on Director Planning and Engineering. I'm here to show AMAFCA's support for this plan. We appreciate all the collaboration and hard work that was done by county staff. We look forward to our continued collaboration as we move forward guiding development throughout the AMAFCA jurisdiction, and we urge the Commission to support this plan and move for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freed.
Tim McKeachan, followed by Peggy Norton, followed by Casey Hovden.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Tim McKeachan, and I'm a longtime Burnley County resident and have been a licensed New Mexico real estate broker for over forty-six years, working both in brokerage and development. I come today to speak in favor of these proposals. Certainty is vital to quality development and growth. Having a clear set of development requirements, rules, and procedure will give people trying to develop within our county the peace of mind that if you know that if you play by the rules, your chances for success go way up. Whether a local developer or someone from coming out of state trying to bring jobs and growth to our community, knowing that a set of rules is in place will encourage more folks contemplating a Burnley County project into pulling the trigger. Nothing is more discouraging to these prospects than thinking they have a viable plan, tying up a property, and spending money only to find out later it's not going to pass. That is not a good reputation for us to have within the site locator community. It might keep us from making some people's short lists. Again, I encourage support, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir.
Peggy Norton.
Yes, my name is Peggy Norton, and I'm president of the North Valley Coalition, which goes from I forty up to the Burnley County-Sandival Line. And to be honest, I have not been as involved in this comprehensive plan. I've been to a few of the meetings. I've really appreciated hearing people's comments today. We have two very important issues, and I have talked with Alvera about them. And one is that the boundaries north of Roy Road be acknowledged as being part of the Burnley County Comprehensive Plan. I've been assured that they are, but it sounded like listening to Pat Hauser, like the maps don't reflect that yet. So I hope they will in the short term. The other important thing is something Rene Horvath brought up about sector plans being dropped by the city. I'm honored to see that the comprehensive plan is going to include the North Valley Area Plan as being an important component of it, and we respect that. As far as whether to go along with the city plan or not, we've had a lot of problems with the city plan. The city, it's very difficult to use the city vision plan as hardcore in land use issues. And there's been a lot of problems with land use, I think, in the city, as well as the county. And special use permits, it sounds like those are going to be changed. So we do support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Horton.
Casey Hovden.
Hi, my name is Casey Hovden, and I'm with the New Mexico Environmental Law Center. Thank you, Chair Baca, and members of the board for the opportunity to speak today regarding the board's consideration of the Burnley County Comprehensive Plan. The New Mexico Environmental Law Center, alongside community advocates, encourages the board to pause its consideration of the comprehensive plan until the board can revisit and reconsider the prior approval of the Santalina Level A Master Plan. Currently, the comprehensive plan relies on the Santalina Level A Master Plan, a development plan approved nearly ten years ago, to inform the planning of one of the six community areas in unincorporated Burnley County. The Santalina Level A Master Plan and its approval, however, are based upon inaccurate data and misinformation. The master plan for the proposed Santalina development purports to meet population, employment, and housing needs that are based upon population projections that are nearly five-hundred percent larger than the reality of Burnley County's projected growth. We agree with the Planning and Development Services that the comp plan should be based upon up-to-date data. As you know, new data is available to the board through the November twenty-twenty-three Bieber Report, the more accurately reflects the growth and needs of Burnley County and its communities. The Law Center urges the board to reevaluate the Santalina Level A Master Plan in light of this new data, to ensure that the comp plan relies upon development plans like the Santalina Level A Master Plan that adequately reflects and meets Burnley County community's needs, resources, and current reality. By pausing its consideration of the comprehensive plan until the board can revisit and reconsider the nearly decade-old approval of the Santalina Level A Master Plan, the board will ultimately be establishing trust with the communities it serves and can begin building a strong foundation as it moves forward in managing and planning Burnley County in a manner that best serves and represents the communities that are elected and entrusted to this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hovden.
Susan Kelly.
Thank you. Madam Chair and members of the Commission, my name is Susan Kelly. I'm a resident of unincorporated Burnley County. And today I just am making a few comments on the arrangements with the City of Albuquerque. I'll have further comments on the substance of the plan later. I understand that the county wants to keep the sector plans and the rank-three plans, and I actually agree with that approach because I don't like what happened in the city planning process. However, in growth areas, I'd really like to see more coordinated planning, particularly for major capital improvements such as roads, infrastructure for schools, water, flood control. We simply have to have the same priorities for growth. And the plan has some examples of collaborative projects. I think that the Alameda Drain along Second Street should be added. There's examples of collaboration given, the Library Transit Mental Health MOU. I think that open space should be added, and a non-motorized trail network should be added, and public safety. I think these are all regional systems, and we can't simply think about the city versus the county. There's a mechanism to do this. There's rank-two facility plans that are different than area plans, and these are appropriate for the arroyos, for trails, for open space, for other facilities. When I worked at the city, we did parks, open space, and recreational trails planning, and it was a massive countywide project that brought in a lot of new ideas and wove together this amazing natural network that we have. I agree with the comments that have been made about water and Santalina, and I think that it's a good plan, but there's more things that should be looked at before you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Okay, one more time for Ms. Amy Craig.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm Amy Craig. I am a Senior Vice President with Jones Lang LaSalle, and I am a site selection and economic incentives consultant. So we work with corporations and economic developers every day. And having a comprehensive plan like the county has pulled together makes our lives much easier and makes the lives of the companies much easier as well, as well as the communities that we are going into. So I applied the holistic approach that the county has taken to identify areas where more intense commercial and housing activities are allowed to take place. I believe that this plan can serve as a resource guide for other developers to understand the standards that need to be implemented through the county and also has the chapter that to reflect current economic trends in the programs to facilitate economic development. So I again applaud you for all of the thought that has gone behind this plan, and I believe that it will be very helpful to the county and to use as a guidebook for other counties in the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Craig.
And that concludes public comment.
Wow, we did it. It is four-fifty-two. Thank you all so much for your cooperation and participation. I guess I would ask Mr. Hamm, we're going to continue this, and for the benefit of the public, do I call this public hearing adjourned, or do we call it in recess? My request is that these public comments come back to staff, that we address those public comments, and we continue next with the rest of your presentation from the departments, the meat of the plan that people are really looking for. So the question is whether we call this a recess now or an adjournment.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, my suggestion would be to just continue the request through a future hearing date.
Okay.
And then we can pick up with, you know, the record will be intact, and we can take forth, you know, with today's proceeding and essentially pick up where we left off.
Great. And so we will do that. Will you be ready to do that on April ninth with some of these comments, responses, or shall we? To be determined with public notice.
Madam Chair, if I could have just a brief moment to confer with my team, and we'll kind of try and figure out like when we think we could be able to be back before you.
Real quick, because we gotta take a break here, and people are here for five o'clock.
Madam Chair, challenge accepted.
Okay. We will continue this meeting to April ninth, and if we need to continue beyond that, but we hope to see any of the public that would like to come, we'll continue in the same process with a presentation from staff and public comment, and then come to the Commission. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will take a brief ten-minute break before we begin. I apologize to those of you who are here for the five o'clock, but we're going to start at five-ten.